Hey, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Birmingham City Council. We're gonna have our prayer by Counselor Woods, and we will have our Pledge of Allegiance. I don't have it in front of me, so who's scheduled to do that?
Counsel Hillyard.
By Counsel Hillyard, okay. If we all could please stand. Good morning, Counsel Woods, good morning.
Good morning, good morning. By your heads. Dear Father, we thank you for another day to serve. We thank you for another day to fight. We thank you for another opportunity to get it right, Lord. We just ask that you continue to guide us through this difficult time where difficult decisions lay ahead. Lord, we ask that you give us wisdom to decide what is the right course of action? What is the right path to take, Lord? We ask that you watch over this city in the midst of a pandemic and just continue to keep people safe, allow people to take the proper precautions, and just guide our steps, Lord. Let us grow together and not apart, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, Mr. Clark, how are you?
Great, sir, how are you?
Good. Call roll, please.
Counsel President Pro Tim Alexander.
Good morning here.
Good morning, ma'am. Counselor Member Hillyard.
Present.
Counselor Member Hoyt.
Present.
Counselor Member O'Quinn. Counselor Member Smithman. Counselor Member Williams. Counselor Member Woods. Counselor Member Abbott. President Parker.
Good morning here. The approval of the minutes for March 3rd.
Some move.
Okay, I can do it real quick for you. Counselor Member Smithman, one second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, thank you.
Okay, all right, the minutes are not ready for March 10th, 2020, through August 11th of 2020. So with that, Mr. Mayor, good morning, sir, how are you?
Good morning, Mr. President, and good morning to the entire council. President, if you don't mind, what I'll do this morning to you, with you and your colleagues, is jump right in. You all know that these facial covers aren't the best, so let me know if you can't hear me if I need to stop and/or repeat myself. And this morning, I will be presenting to you the fiscal year 2021 budget. There's a lot of information to share, Mr. President and council, but I will try to be succinct and to the point. I'm gonna have some brief remarks first, and then Lester Smith, along with myself, will present you some information along with the book that we can also have our audience follow by screen. Years from now, when we reflect on the 2020, on the year 2020, the coronavirus pandemic will be the moment norms were shattered, the economy stalled to a level not seen since the Great Depression, and our view of the future seemed a bit more in question. I think what I appreciate, though, is together, and when I say together, we, the mayor and the council, we responded to the call. I want to thank you all personally for partnering with me as we move quickly to take the steps to protect our residents, our employees from the pandemic through curfews, mandatory face covering ordinances, and securing funds for PPE, hazard pay, as well as overtime. As a city, we partner with others to provide relief for small businesses and displaced workers directly affected by the economic crisis created by the pandemic. And we have stood as a committed partner in the national call for social justice. We present this budget at a time when we join other cities in facing a great challenge. We've seen the impact of the pandemic on revenue, but we don't clearly see what the future holds for the pandemic and work on the vaccine. Our Finance Department currently projects a $63 million revenue shortfall through June 30th of 2021. Again, our Finance Department currently projects a $63 million shortfall through June 30th of 2021 due to the reduction in business taxes. Again, that's from a reduction in business taxes. Eighty-two percent of our revenue comes from those business taxes. That's eighty-two cents of every dollar directly connected to business license, occupational taxes, use taxes, and sales taxes. And we will not truly understand the city's financial position until after business license collections in the first quarter of 2021. Now, the National League of Cities projects a $360 billion shortfall for American cities through 2022. Already, many cities have made drastic cuts to capital improvement, public safety, and many programs. I believe we, the city of Birmingham, cannot let this economic crisis interfere with our commitment to basic services, to our residents, and the 99 neighborhoods. And so this proposed budget remains focused on neighborhood revitalization, as well as fiscal responsibility. The city will invest in city infrastructure to support our communities and attract new businesses. This budget includes a $10 million allocation for street resurfacing. This budget prioritizes investment in deferred maintenance and rolling stock because neglecting our duty to serve as good stewards of our resources is not acceptable, particularly during an economic crisis. We will do right by our employees and protect our financial standing by, again, increasing the city's contribution to the pension fund. I'm proud to say with this budget, the city will have increased those contributions by 70% over the last two years. And we will continue funding for important initiatives such as Birmingham Promise, Birmingham On Demand, and our recycling program, City Haul, that's H-A-U-L. Now, to accomplish this, we have already implemented cost savings that many of you all are aware of. The city has put a freeze on hiring to address the current crisis. We've saved by eliminating all nonessential travel, training, dues, and subscriptions, and office supplies. Overtime has been reduced for all non-public safety positions. Again, overtime has been reduced for all non-public safety positions. The city has notified the boards and agencies in our community that we will reduce all noncontractual funding by 12.4 million. Vendors who staged many events and festivals in the city have been notified that cost waivers for city services will not be an option this year. Economic incentives have been reduced by 1.7 million. As you know, we have reduced personnel costs already through a suspension of merit raises, longevity pay, and the suspension of cost of living adjustments, otherwise known as COLA. This budget also removes 447 excess vacant positions at a savings of more than $15.8 million. We moved quickly to find savings and reductions, but from being very honest with you, we still must do more. Now, the current economic crisis magnifies a trend in the city's operational cost structure. For several years, increased annual costs have directly countered annual growth in revenue. And without a correction to that trend, the city's budget will be unsustainable in coming years, especially in times of economic crisis. Many of you all know the mission of this administration, which is building community through servant leadership. And so as we work to continue basic services, I must lead by example, which is a call and conversation I had with all appointed staff this morning. Effective immediately, I will voluntarily reduce my pay by 10%. In addition, we will implement a 3% to 10% pay reduction for all meritorial appointees. We've taken every step to make sure basic services continue in the city while creating stability in operational costs to withstand any additional hits to the economy. It is our fiscal responsibility to taxpayers to furlough employees who cannot currently perform their normal work functions due to closed facilities. Please let me repeat that. It is our fiscal responsibility as mayor and council to the taxpayers to furlough employees who cannot currently perform their normal work functions due to closed facilities. This action will apply to full-time employees at all cultural and recreation facilities currently closed due to the pandemic. In addition, we will furlough all part-time employees. And the city will suspend nine paid holidays in this fiscal year. This will provide a budget saving spread over the calendar of the year rather than in one concentrated pay period. These are hard decisions. They don't come lightly, and it's emotionally heavy. But combined, these actions will reduce spending by $35 million in fiscal year 2021. Combined, these actions ensure no reduction takes place in public safety or general government services. I spoke with our employees this morning because before I presented this information to the public, I thought it was fair, the same advance notice with hard news we gave to boards and agencies, our employees deserve that same advance notice. They are our greatest asset, and I believe we are to be very thankful for their service. But we must remember our duties to the people, the residents, and the taxpayers who make up the 99 neighborhoods. This budget is a commitment to those residents that we will do the job they put us here to do. Mr. President and council, at this point in time, I'm gonna allow Chaz Mitchell to pass you the proposed budget booklet, along with Kev and Moore, I believe. Lester Smith will come up here and join me as we present some additional information that you all can follow along. At this point of time, as it relates to this book, I imagine you're gonna need some time and want some time to go through it. However, for this morning's presentation, I have this document that we'll walk through together. I know it's thick, but trust me, it won't take long. This information will also be on the screen for you as well. Whoever's quarterbacking the screen, could you all pull up the information we have, please? Of course, we will continue. The document before you has the 2020 adopted budget, and you see the revenue adjustments. In addition to that, you see the expenses for our personnel costs and our general fund expenditures. You see the total gains and losses before the cost adjustment. Then you see the reductions of costs. Overall, personnel is 26 million less. Boards and agencies, as I stated earlier, is 12.4 less, 12.4 million less. Economic incentives of a decrease of 1.7 million less, and the restructuring of our debt and warrants is 3.8 million. That leaves a gap of 23 million, we feel, which we close that gap by going into our reserve account, $23 million. You see on this same page that we have not deviated from our priorities. Many of you all have heard me speak to the fact that when a resident walks out of their home, they look to the left or right, there's an overgrown lot or dilapidated structure. They pull out their driveway and they drive down the road, there is a street that hasn't been paved or pothole. They expect basic cities' functions and services to continue, economic crisis or no crisis. It was important that we keep funding at the core of what's your priority as counselors, what's my priority as mayor, and the priority of a resident. Again, that's 10 million in street paving, 3.5 million in demolition, 1.25 in weed abatement, 300,000 in land bank. We know that there's been a delay in deferred maintenance or not the right investments in deferred maintenance. So as you see, 3 million in deferred maintenance, 4 million in rolling stock, which includes fire trucks, police cars, as well as public works, equipment and trucks, and of course, continued land bank support. You switch over to revenue. You see the 2020 to 2021 budget revenue. The adopted budget, again, was at 451 million. We have some good news in the middle of this economic crisis. Our property taxes have increased by 3.4 million. Permits and fees, as it relates to construction, et cetera, as done to the city of Birmingham, good, has increased by 3.3 million. However, everything else took a hit, charge for services, other revenue, and business taxes, which saw a $63 million decline, right at 62.7 million. And so this proposed 2021 operating budget versus last year at 451, 451 million is proposed at 389.8 million. As you go over to the next pages, you see where we took the hits in sales taxes, lodging taxes, leasing rental, business license, occupational taxes. The next two lines, you can see the trend as it relates to this peak of when business licenses come in. And this is a note, I'll take the time to express this to you. The coronavirus has proved to be volatile times, and you can't necessarily predict everything. Our budgets are usually based on past performance as it relates to historical trends and data. As we've combed through and presented this budget to you today, and you all were gracious and you gave us an additional three months because we had no historical data to measure this off, we still have to assume and prepare for possibly the worst as it relates to our business license don't come in until January and February. So we were safe in the fiscal year that ended June 30th, 2020 fiscal year that ended June 30th, because we got our business license taxes in January and February, then the economy hit rock bottom in March. You've heard me say it before, but today, for example, we know businesses such as Lucy's and Bobaloo and so many others, maybe six to seven that just come to mind, close permanently. That means we'll never see their business license taxes again, we'll never see their sales taxes again, we'll never see their occupational taxes again, et cetera. We don't know what's gonna happen in January and February. By definition, Lester, these are Lester words, not mine, that's the city of Birmingham's Christmas. That's when we receive the most of our revenue, so we can only hope for the best. You switch over, you can see the business license, business tax license. You see these mountain-looking figures. What that looks like is that's, those peaks are pretty much every pay quarter we're being paid. You see 19 versus 2020, so it's down. We're gonna switch over to expenditures. Many of you all know, today is the first day I don't have to actually let me borrow a dollar because I actually have it for you right here, if you turn to this page. You see that every dollar that goes out of the city, 70 cent is the city employees. Boards and agencies make up 8 cent, debt services make up 4 cent, utilities make up 4 cent, and you have a remaining about 14 cent that includes a lot of things. If you imagine a turnip, I want you all to know we squeezed everything we could out of the 30 cent before we went to the 70 cent. So that started with the boards and agencies, and if it was a noncontractual, noncontractual relationship, their funding was decreased anywhere from 50 to 100%. We restructured our, we were looking to restructure our debt services. Again, you see where we're gonna net. And there wasn't much we can do with utilities. So then we came to the 70 cent, which has been explained to you already. You go to the next page, you look at 2020 to 2021 budget expenditures. You see how we solve for the gap. The personnel cost reduced at 26.2 million, boards and agencies 12.6 million, economics incentives 1.7 million, debt restructure 3.8. But we still had a gap of other city services, which included certain equipments and contracts we had, were obligated towards. One of those contractual obligations, for example, that we couldn't solve for, but is presented to us in the middle of this, is the crossplex. That's how you get that red 5.7. You have other things such as Acxiom and the equipment, cameras, et cetera, that's how you get to the 5.7, all of that combined. You see our expenditures doesn't match the 389, that's 412, that's how you got that 23 million gap, which is where we went into the reserve. You go to the next page, you look at personnel costs. We tried to do this with the least amount of pain point to our employees, attempting to keep everybody employed. Unfortunately, we were only able to keep a little over 90% of them employed, not 100%. We started with the vacant positions. Again, those vacant positions were 447, right at 15.8 million. What's been happening in the past is surplus personnel, the shale game, y'all know what I'm talking about. The vacant positions were used as overtime. So when this new budget presented to you for the first time, the city actually had to bake in overtime. It had to be actually included in the actual budget, which is why you're seeing red 9.5. Technically, that's still a reduction from last year. Overtime was, was it 11 or 12 million? Actually, last year, overtime was 22 million. You see the salaries are reduction of my appointed staff is half a million. Suspension of the non-paid holidays for all employees is at 2.5 million. We know through attrition via retirements, that's a cost savings roughly about four. And then the furlough positions I spoke to earlier. All the part-time positions is a total of 129, that's 1.3 million. The furlough of the culture and recreation employees is 259 of them, 11.6. That's a total personnel cost reductions of 26.2 million. You go to the next page, and what you see is a high level of vacant, defunded vacant positions. So on the general government, which includes departments such as the mayor's office, it includes human resources and legal and community development, and I'm missing so many others. I have 38 positions cut. On the public safety, which includes police, fire, public works, we cut 188. And on the culture and recreation, we cut 221. That's how you get the 447 and the total cost attached to it. Then we broke it down for you by department. So there was no department that went unscathed. Our police department was cut, was cut 48 positions. I want you all to skip to this page where it shows the cuts for boards and agencies. I think since May, I've been sharing with you all there are no sacred cows. Everybody's gonna receive a pain point. I want to say probably over the last eight to nine weeks, we've been reaching out to executive directors, presidents, and CEOs, as well as their board chairperson and vice chairperson, having webexes and calls, et cetera, about what was coming and what they received last year wasn't gonna be on the table this year. I want to speak to two of these organizations while I'm on this page. Birmingham City School System and the Birmingham Transit Authority are very unique and stand out versus everybody else, and it needs to be explained publicly. These two organizations are technically, they're decreasing funding, or they're no funding from us is being offset from other sources of funding. The Transit Authority, for example, received 21 million in CARES funding. We continue to be in talks with Frank Martin, as well as his board, around solving for, making sure that no services are cut. We believe that we've reached something that works out. They cannot spend all of their funding on the city of Birmingham riders. However, the city of Birmingham riders make up 84% of their ridership. So we do expect some of that CARES money to offset what we can't give them this year. That conversation is a future conversation related to the first two quarters of 2021, which are the third and fourth quarter of our city's budget. The school system, I had a conversation with their superintendent, Dr. Sullivan, as well as all nine of their board members this past Friday, letting them know the bad news and the good news. The bad news is they will not be receiving funding out of our general fund. However, their budget that they receive from our other taxes hasn't changed. So they'll be receiving over 100 million just out of regular ad valorem property taxes. But the good news is what they're not receiving out of our general fund discretionary money is offset by increase in CapEx dollars, capital expenditures. So all the economic deals that Dr. Carpers's team is bringing to the city of Birmingham that we're getting yes to, the deals that Counselor John Hillier and his Economic Development Committee are approving, and the whole body is approving, is allowing us to do more construction in our city. Think of some of the recent deals, the FedEx on Lakeshore, the deal that's coming at the Old Central Plaza, the new stadium, all these deals. It's increasing CapEx dollars that are going directly to the school system every year. This year, we're happy to state that that's a little over 2 million that's going directly to the school system. And so we gave them the bad, that they weren't receiving discretionary money, but we gave them the good. They're receiving direct money from the economic gains that we bring into the city. As you see everybody else, again, if it wasn't a contractual obligation, they receive a significant cut. This is also a good time to state to the residents of the city of Birmingham, patrons of the city of Birmingham, private citizens of the city of Birmingham, small businesses of the city of Birmingham, and corporate Birmingham. There was ever a time to show your love, show your support to an organization, a cultural asset you love, city of Birmingham School System, Birmingham Civil Rights Institute, Birmingham Museum of Art, Vulcan Railroad Park, Red Mountain, Ruffner Mountain, Arlington, Schloss, Negro Southern League Museum, Southern Museum of Flight, and so many other boards and agencies that you love. There was ever a time to support them, now is that time. And when I say support, I mean financially, as an individual, as a patron, as a citizen, as a small business owner, as corporate Birmingham, because they are receiving an extreme extreme less funding in city taxes this year. As you go to this page, you see it's titled expenditure overview by department. I'm almost done, Mr. President and Council. I want you all to flip to this page, it's titled general government. Every department internally in the city of Birmingham will see a pay decrease with the exception of three. One of them, I'm gonna go into detail about. The three are our finance department, our human resources department, and our police department. Now, earlier you heard me stated that I cut positions out of all the departments, and that included these three departments. And so then the question is, well, why are these three departments budgets not showing that if there was a decrease in heads, then we would think there would be a decrease in funding? However, city of Birmingham, you know one of our core values is efficiency. We've been working on making government more efficient, that includes internally as well. I think we all know that we've had finance employees embedded in various departments throughout the city. We've had HR employees embedded through departments throughout the city. And we've had security guards embedded throughout various departments through the city. And so from an accountability standpoint, from a more efficiency standpoint, and from a more, not control, but more so how to deliver services from HR, from finance, from security, we moved everybody out of individual departments and put all of those people who are H, in HR, back into the HR department. Therefore, you will see a small increase in their budget. We put all the finance department employees back all in the finance department. I want you to think of the museum of art, their security guards, municipal court, I mean municipal court, their security guards, when you walk into city hall, we have security guards here, and Arlington has security guards, and Schloss and, um, Southern Negro, um, Museum, and all of these different buildings and facilities we have, have non-sworn officers, security guards. But what we found is there's been no coordination among them. What we found is if one person or two people get sick, a building is down on the security, think after five PM on a weekday, think on the weekend. And so we shifted all those civilian employees, which is ninety-two of them, to the police department. Their FTE and headcount is going to follow them. Therefore, you will see a significant increase in the police department's budget that is not for sworn officers. Remember earlier, I told you, we cut the police department's budget. However, you will see an increase in the police department's budget because non-sworn officers in the form of security guards have all shifted to one department instead of being spread out. That would have happened regardless of the, um, or separate from the coronavirus, because we've been working on our efficiencies. You see it in the same thing in public safety, culture and rec, and what I just explained with the police department is an actual detailed page for you. I wanna speak to the fund balance. Again, the proposed expenditures is four twelve point eight, the proposed revenue is three hundred and eighty-nine point eight, that left a twenty-three million dollar gap, which we went into our reserve fund. You see on the next page, different funding needs related to internal and external. And then I want Lester to come up here and talk about the pension right quick, and then, Mr. President, I'll close out in a thirty seconds.
Good morning, I'm Lester Smith, I serve as the Finance Director for the city of Birmingham. The page that you're looking at now, which has to do with the pension, the reason this is in here is there's been a lot of conversation over, I guess, the last four months about quote-unquote rainy day fund, general reserve fund, how come we cannot leverage those funds to relieve some of the burden that the city is currently feeling in its budget? One thing I wanna make everybody aware of is that this is a layout of our current ratings from Moody's, S and P, and Fitch. If you look, uh, the little green box signifies where our previous rating was. The blue box signifies where our current rating is. If you'll see that Moody's, last year we were rated AA two, now we're rated AA three, they downgraded us last March. In addition to downgrading us, because they kept us at a high-grade level, they changed our outlook from stable to negative. S and P has not done a review of our credit last year or this year thus far. If we move to Fitch, you'll see that last year, Fitch, in February, downgraded us from high grade, AA minus, where they had us at negative outlook, they downgraded us to a upper medium grade, A plus, but changed our outlook to stable. One of the reasons that the city was downgraded, and one of the concerns that all the credit rating agencies continue to speak to, is the city's unfunded pension liability, which is closing in on one billion dollars. Okay? So when you look, what I've done is I've simply taken excerpts from the actual reports that we get from the credit rating agencies, and it lists factors that could lead to an upgrade and factors that could lead to a downgrade. One of the reasons that we've been able to maintain, other than the two great downgrades last year, our current rating is because we had reserves, i.e. quote-unquote the rainy day fund, as well as the general reserve. So it's important that we continue to protect that funding. When you look at the items mentioned, the factors that could lead to an upgrade and factors that could lead to a ground downgrade, there are three items right now impacting the city of Birmingham. Those are those three checkmarks there, one is good, two is bad. I've got one, significant sustained improvement in the pension fund, I'll kinda touch on later. The other two that could lead to a downgrade is declines in reserves, which is what I'm speaking to right now, as well as deterioration of tax base size, which is what we're experiencing right now. If we flip over to the next chart, it was imperative, if you think about it, two years ago, we were at about a fifty-two percent funding of what they say our annual contribution could be. Last year, we increased the pension contribution from eight and a half percent up to twelve percent, which was a forty percent increase. Okay? That took us up to right at about a, um, seventy percent funding. This year, we're projecting another two and a half percent increase. That will bring us up to right at ninety percent funding of our arc. That's what this chart shows. It shows that the city's contribution of fourteen point five percent gets us close to the ADC, as it was determined as of June thirtieth, twenty nineteen, of sixteen point oh six percent. So I wanted to speak on this, that, uh, it's still important from the city's perspective to not only manage the current economic crisis, but also to lead and invest in the future. This contribution increase over last year does both of those things.
Thank you, Lester. As I close out, Mr. President, thank you for your time, and, um, the council, thank you for your time. I know I've reached out to many of you all, and, um, we will be doing some one-on-ones tomorrow. I know there's a lot of questions. I imagine there are some unknown questions because you hadn't had, even had a chance to dive into it as deep as you wanna be, so I look forward to that time. I'll just mention three things, highlight, if you can see in, in the theme of this, is one, neighborhood revitalization, two, fiscal responsibility, and three, accountability to the taxpayers. Start with the first one. We have to focus on what's closest to where a resident lives. There's so much and so many things to be done. I think since we've been in office, we all came in a little staggered a couple months apart, but as a team, we've continued to make that focus and, and take a hit towards that things aren't working for our residents, and I'm glad to see that we're still focused on those things even in a downtime. Second thing is, when I say fiscal accountability and responsibility, one of the most important things we can do for our employees is make sure the pension is solvent. At any point in time, the last thing an employee should be worried about, if and when they choose to retire, that money's gonna run out. The city has its responsibility towards the pension, and we're meeting that mark. Third thing I will say towards the accountability of the taxpayers' dollars. Notice how we went at nine of the twelve paid holidays, and we went at the furloughs related to the facilities that can't be open and provides, and doesn't allow maximize employees to perform their duties because. Much as we love our employees and wanna invest in them and make the best decisions to keep making sure they can stay on the front lines to provide services, taxpayers expect, um, dollars to be used for those who are performing. When you're in a down year, um, that is how we get to, if you're not working on a holiday, that's why we can't pay you, because there's no money to pay you. Not that you don't deserve it, it's not that we don't wanna give it, it's not that you don't deserve your cola, merit, or longevity. But if it doesn't come in, it can't go out. Mr. President, it is not coming in this year at the rate we need it to be. So I thank you for your time, um, I thank you for your service, and I look forward to continuing conversations over the next few weeks around the budget. I yield it back to you, Mr. President.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. I think there's a lot to digest, um, we'll have to digest. Uh, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Uh, we will, we'll get ready to have our budget sessions, uh, inviting you and, and your team to participate in our budget process, um.
I did have one question.
Okay, all right, we're gonna do one question, Mr. Hoyt?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, um, was it, um, any reason why we didn't do across the board in terms of departments, as opposed to choosing and picking which departments would be realizing the, the reduction, um, the overall budget of those departments?
Yes, sir, three reasons, Mr. President and Council. First reason is if you strip away everything that a municipal government is responsible for, so it doesn't matter if it's any of the hundred, the other hundred and sixty-eight cities in the state of Alabama, it doesn't matter if it's any city in Amer, in, in America, the fifty states, doesn't matter if it's any, um, state government of the fifty states or the United States of America. You strip away everything a government is supposed to do. The root of what we do, there's two things. Public safety, public infrastructure. There is no one else, our citizens, whether they're Birminghamian, Alabamians, or Americans, that depend on when they call three-one-one, and a city tree is down. It's our job to get it up. They call three-one-one, they expect a city employee to pick up that phone. Call nine-one-one, they expect, um, a dispatcher to pick up, and they expect a police car to show up, they expect a paramedic to show up if there's a health issue, and they expect a fire truck to show up if there's a fire. In addition to that, there is no one else responsible for paving streets, there's no one else responsible for stormwater, there's no one else responsible for sidewalks and potholes, there's no one responsible, there's no one else responsible for a hundred and sixteen of the hundred and seventeen city parks. So, we're not in a position to cut public safety, we're not in a position to cut public infrastructure, because it's no one else's job. When you look at culture and arts, because you won't ask for the other two reasons, again, there are a few of our employees out of thirty-five plus hundred, there are less than three hundred of them out of, out of thirty-five hundred plus employees today and for the last six months that cannot perform their work duty due to their facilities being closed because of the coronavirus. These employees are not fired, they're furloughed. Still will be receiving their health benefits, or minimum three, three months, they'll still be receiving all of their benefits. But you strike a balance between that and the taxpayer who expects their tax dollars to be used wisely, especially when they're short of tax dollars. But here's the third reason. Culture and arts, whether it's internal or external, based on the information I just shared about the citizen, the patron, the small business, or the corporate Birmingham. We all love our cultural assets, and they've taken a hit because of the coronavirus, but they're also in a position to receive outside funding, very different than a paving the street, or a police service, or a fire service, or a public work service, or a trash service, or a pothole service, than it would be our culture and arts. And, Mr. President and Council, those are the three reasons, sir.
Okay, all right, listen, we've got plenty of time, we're gonna digest this forward, backwards, um, so we'll have more conversations. This is just the beginning of the process, um, so, everybody take a deep breath, and to the audience and to the residents, um, you know, this is just the beginning of the process. Yes, ma'am, we're gonna move on, so, uh-huh.
I have, I have six or eight questions, but I'll boil it down to just one that's pertinent, or that's very pertinent, and that's about, oh, please, sorry.
About the part-time employees that will be furloughed, is this every part-time employee in the city of Birmingham?
Yes, ma'am, a hundred and twenty-nine of them.
Okay, so every part-time employee will be furloughed?
Okay, let me make this very clear, with the exception of city council. So whether it's your staff, whether it's your budget, you're the exception.
Okay, but, well, I'm talking about the city employees.
Yes, ma'am.
Not us, but everybody.
Yes.
If you're part-time, you're furloughed.
Yes.
Okay, that, I just wanted to understand that.
Yes, ma'am.
Part of Jefferson County Personnel Board rules, um, ample notice has to be given, there will be a process, we will continue to communicate with our employees.
Okay.
In addition to that information, Mr. President and Council, um, there will be, uh, several conversations today via email as well as webex, not only with employees, but with the departments, department heads. Remember, a lot of these organizations that are the full-time employees receiving furloughs, separate from the work we do, they have their individual boards. So Arlington, Southern Museum of Flight, Schloss, Museum of Art, um, et cetera, they all have their boards. And so I imagine those department heads will be hit two ways from, um, their employees wanting and needing and deserving information, as well as their board, uh, members and their board leadership on, tell us what's next. So, uh, we have HR in place and ready, we have our leadership team in place and ready. I imagine as of, since I've been talking, our employees have received several emails on the information that I've already shared with you as well.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am, okay, all right, uh, Mr. Clark, we're ready to, uh, move on to the consent agenda, please.
One second, sir. Okay, um, got a couple corrections as well, once we get into it.
Yeah, and I've got a couple ones I need to withdraw as well, so.
Okay, um, we'll start with item two on page two with the consent agenda. Page twenty-four. We have items three, four, and five on consent. And you gotta bear with me, make sure I hit these corrections, Mr. President. On page twenty-five, we have item number six on consent. Page twenty-six, we have items nine and ten on consent, as well as item number twelve. Page twenty-seven, we have items thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen on consent. Page twenty-eight, we have items sixteen, seventeen, and nineteen on consent. On item sixteen, on the one, two, three, four, fifth line down, after buses four, it should read bus rapid, uh, missed that, you know. Where's Chad? I guess that's, um, fleet, and then after expansion, it should read. I guess that's fleet, and then after expansion, it should read and other bus rapid transit-related expenses. And then you pick back up with four, a total of one million eight hundred eighty thousand four hundred ninety-eight dollars. And the same should also be reflected in the actual resolution, since the synopsis is not what you're passing, you're passing the resolution. So that's item sixteen, and on item seventeen, one, two, three, four, five, six, sixth line down in the synopsis, you should delete the word after TBS, delete the word and, delete the word and on the sixth line down after TBS. That's on item seventeen. Okay, we pick back up with the consent agenda. On page twenty-nine with items twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. On page thirty, items twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one on consent. Page thirty-one, we have items thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, and thirty-six on consent. Page thirty-two, we have items thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, and forty-one on consent. Page thirty-three, we have items forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, and forty-six on consent. On page thirty-four, we have items forty-seven, forty-eight, and forty-nine on consent, and you should have the revisions to items forty-seven and forty-eight. Before you, I passed those out before we started the council meeting. And those strikes are noted in that correction as far as forty-seven is concerned and forty-eight is concerned. We pick back up with the consent agenda on page thirty-five with items fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, and fifty-three. Page thirty-six. We have items fifty-four and fifty-five on consent. And just because I'm going down those items that need correcting, I'll go ahead and pick up with fifty-six, fifty-seven, and fifty-eight should be noted as being recommended by Council President Parker and not Hoyt. We'll get that straightened out in the next couple agendas. That's fifty-six, fifty-seven, and fifty-eight. And then you have three addendums that should have just been passed out.
Yeah, okay, real quick, I'll take the first stab at everything, real quick, and then we can go around and see. On item eleven, if we could withdraw that one. That one can be withdrawn. And on for item two, I think it's number four sixty-four, where it's, I think the address is twenty-seven nineteen, I think it's Twenty-seventh Avenue, Enslie. Had some calls about that, so we could just take that item, take.
You wanna withdraw four sixty-four from within?
Yes, sir, yeah.
We'll delete that.
Yeah.
That's on page nineteen?
Yes, sir, okay.
Let's make sure we got the right one, seventeen twenty-five, Twenty-seventh Street?
I think it's seventeen twenty-nine.
Twenty-seventh Street?
Yeah, Twenty-seventh Avenue, I think in Enslie. I'd gotten a call about that.
We just wanna make sure I got the right one?
Four sixty-four, right?
I think it's four sixty-four, yes, ma'am.
Four sixty-four?
Here is, it's seventeen twenty-nine, Twenty-seventh Street, is.
Item four sixty-four.
Item two, number four sixty-four.
Okay, not four sixty-five, okay.
No, four sixty-four.
Four sixty-four on page nineteen?
Yes, sir.
We got it.
Okay, all righty. On the addendums, fifty-nine, sixty is, is simply because of COVID just postponing the elections for neighborhood. So at sixty, and on sixty-one, we'll have to take a name up, so.
So fifty-nine and sixty?
Yes, sir.
Fifty-nine and sixty are on consent?
I'm asking. I'm requesting.
No, not sixty.
Okay, all right, we'll take sixty off, okay. But fifty-nine stays on. Everybody good with fifty-nine staying on? Okay, sixty will stay off, okay. And then sixty-one, of course, we'll have to, we'll have to do that by submitting a name. All right. Dr. Quinn, you're good. Let's, we can start now. Everybody's good around? Yes, ma'am?
I would like to say item forty-eight off consent.
Okay.
What number, I'm sorry?
Forty-eight. They gave us a revised version of it, so let me.
Thirty-four?
No, she said item forty-eight.
It's on page thirty-four?
Yes.
The request is to pull that off consent?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, is that all? Counselor Smith?
Yes, thank you.
Counselor Woods, you're good and everything, all right. Counselor Williams? Counselor Abbott, counsel? Hoyt, you're good, okay, all right. Amen. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing, so requests. If so, such item or items will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. All matters of permanent operation will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced.
Motion to approve.
Counselor Williams and President Protem Alexander.
Counsel. Protem Alexander?
Aye.
Counselor Member Huyu?
Aye.
Counselor Member Hoyt?
Yes.
Counselor Member O'Quinn? Counselor Member Smithman?
Aye.
Counselor Member Williams?
Aye.
Counselor Member Woods? Absent. Counselor Member Abbott?
Aye.
President Parker?
Aye, so the consent agenda passes. Let's go, Counselor Abbott, I think, number one. I guess we need to do that, don't we?
Mr. Clerk, do you have a copy of number one, item one?
I have the, the resolution, I guess, yes, ma'am, I think I got it. Oh, actually, no.
You don't?
I don't know, ma'am, I think that's something you guys tell us to date or whatever, and we've just plugged it.
Yeah, all that's in there.
Mrs. Kidd has it there for you. So you're going to read it, or I'm just going to tell the date?
That's up to you.
Okay, well, the, I'll just say it.
Okay.
The, the City Council will hold a public hearing on the budget at five-thirty PM on the thirty-first day of August, twenty-twenty, here in the City Council chambers. And Cheryl Kidd, and I know our president already mentioned it earlier, that we're going to be very creative in our means of communication so that everyone can participate, no matter whether they're being safe or not. And if they come here, they're gonna have to be safe. So, August thirty-first at five-thirty PM in the City Council chambers for our public hearing regarding the budget. And I, I move approval.
Second.
Okay. Counsel, President Protem Alexander?
Aye.
Counselor Member Huyu?
Aye.
Counselor Member Hoyt?
Yes.
Counselor Member O'Quinn? Counselor Member Smithman?
Aye.
Counselor Member Williams? Absent. Counselor Member Woods? This is on item one, sir. Setting the hearing?
Yes.
Counselor Member Abbott?
Aye.
President Parker?
Uh, yes, okay. All right, and the hearing will be the thirty-first, and we'll take the necessary protocols as we move forward with that one, so that item passes. All right, next item, Mr. Clerk?
All right, let's see.
And I know we have presentations, so we'll just get through the agenda and then we'll get to the presentations.
Item seven. Item seven on page twenty-five. A resolution assenting to the vacation of five thousand two hundred and sixty-four square feet of alleyway perpendicular to Martin Luther King Junior Drive in parallel to and in between Heritage Lane and Mason Avenue on behalf of Woodland Park Church of Christ owner, so that Woodland Park Church of Christ can consolidate their property and construct a new parking area in the hearing of all interested parties, case number S U B two thousand and twenty-thirteen, and I need you to see is this first or second reading? Second reading, okay, we're fine, just a motion.
Some of.
Second.
All right, item is before you.
Thank you, President Parker. Would you like to present the item? Can you present the item? Are you here to speak on behalf?
Calvin Abram, zoning administrator, City of Birmingham.
Good morning, how you doing?
I'm doing well. As you identified, this is case two thousand and twenty, number thirteen. It was our, read out what the resolution is. A resolution determined whether the City Council will give a cent to the vacation of the following five thousand two hundred and sixty-four square feet of alleyway so that the Woodland, Woodland Park Church of Christ can consolidate their property and construct a new parking area. The one-third right-of-way vacation fee has been paid, I mean, I'm sorry, has been set at three thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars, thirty-six cents. On March eleventh, twenty-twenty, the subdivision committee of the Birmingham Planning Commission recommended approval of this vacation to the full City Council with five conditions. Three of the conditions are typical, however, condition three and four. Condition number three, read on record, is install an eight-inch PVC, I'm sorry, an eight-foot PVC or vinyl fence that shall extend from the existing fence in the side yard to the rear lots of thirty-seven and thirty-eight. Number four, install a five-foot buffer to include Leyland cypresses in accordance with the C four standard, C four buffer, C buffer. And on July seventh, twenty-twenty, the Public Improvements and Beautification Committee recommended this vacation to the full council. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. If anybody is for or against this item, please come up. And when you come speak, please say your name and your address.
Good morning.
Good morning. Can you bring the mic closer to you?
My name is Donnie O'Ford, and I live at eleven oh four Heritage Way, right behind where I live is Woodland Park Church of Christ. We had some issues of pressure washing my house, cleaning my cars, air conditioning cars, and doing some repair work inside of the house, which gratefully they have done. The issue stands now is about the eight-foot fence. I spoke to Mr. Mays about that yesterday, and he explained to me that right now, they got to order the fence. That's not just a common fence you put up. I don't have any problem with that, but I wish they wouldn't get permission to do this parking lot until that fence is up. This have been an issue going on for eleven years. And I don't never hear from them until we get ready to come down here. I'm, I'm dealing with rats running from down there to the dumpster. I'm dealing with the smell that's twenty-five feet from my kitchen door. I'm dealing with the garbage man dumping on Wednesday between three and five o'clock in the morning. So this is what I'm still asking for. I would appreciate it if they are not able to get their parking lot until that fence is up because they have a net of when they want to get something done. They were promising, promising. Now, unfortunately, I met Mr. Ralph Mays here, and he been a man of integrity. I can't speak about the rest of the people that, the church that I was dealing with. So if they get that fence up, then we would be more than welcome for them to put the parking lot up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Woods had a question for you, if you just say one.
Real quick, the fence, what, what is the, was there some kind of agreement between just property owners about a fence?
Yes, sir. Our house was built in ninety-five. That church was built in two thousand and two, and we're right against each other. And, and they said that they was going to put a, they wasn't going to put a fence up until we were persisted about it. A barrier between the commercial building and the residential community. And so now, they said that what they want, they would do, they will agree, we agreed for them to put the fence up. And this been going on, like I say, for eleven years or more. And they built additional building, I think it was in fifteen. And they were supposed to have put, put up some Leyland cypress trees or something to put the barrier, which have never been done.
And you're talking about on the Heritage Way side? What, what street are you on?
I'm on Heritage Way. And, and my house, the church is in my backyard. And so they supposed been had a barrier there to divide us. And it never have been done, but thanks to Mr. Mays there, he been persisted and get, trying to get stuff done, and, and we have gotten the house pressure washed. We have gotten the air conditioning cars cleaned and some problem that was inside of the house.
What, what house are you referring to?
My house.
Is that a, is that an unrelated issue?
Sir.
Is that a related issue?
I can hear you.
Does that have anything to do with the church?
Yes, sir. Because when they was building this church, the heavy equipment they had over there did some damage inside of my house. And, and so when I brought it to their attention, they said that they would get it, get it fixed. That been five, six years ago. And now they have gotten it fixed. The only thing now is putting that fence up.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, Counselor Quinn, and then President Protem Alexander is next.
I just wanna ask, just so I'm clear, the, the fence to this day, since the church was constructed, to this day, there's no fence separating the homes and the church?
No.
Huh, interesting.
Just one quick question, I mean, if I could, Madam Chair, is someone from the church here? Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I was just.
Yeah, we'll.
Okay, I was just, I was just asking, okay, all right.
President Protem Alexander?
Thank you very much. I, I wanna continue with the same question about the fence. Because I thought this particular item, we're requiring a fence to be put up as part of this item? So was this, I was thinking this was in addition to a fence that was already there, but is this in a different area or the same fence?
Same area, but they put up was a chain link fence.
And this item is saying a PVC or a type fence? Okay, I just wanted to get the type of fence. Thank you, sir.
Counselor Hoyt?
Yes, give, give me your name again, please.
Donnie O'Ford.
Mr. Ford. But if I remember correctly, it's been some years. I remember you coming here before and raised some issues about the trash can and all of that, and, and, and I guess I'm wondering, but if I can remember correctly, you have a fence. Is your backyard fenced in?
No, sir.
Oh, it's not? Okay, it's open, okay. Okay, all right, and so you have to look out at this. And so you're trying to, to wipe it out. You don't wanna look at it anymore?
That's correct.
Okay, but you also want the trash, the, to be, I guess, disinfected or to keep down the odor of the trash. to keep down the odor of the trash can because it blows?
Yes, sir, I talked to the people that dump the trash, and they said they stopped, uh, spraying that dumpster, though, all their dumpster because they were deteriorating their material. And where the garbage can is now is twenty-five feet from my kitchen door, where it used to be was about a hundred feet from my kitchen door. And when we sit out, we can't even sit out on the back, a lot of times because of the smell coming from the dumpster.
Okay, so then what we prob, what they probably need to do, the church need to reconsider the location of the, of the dumpster, because I can imagine sitting on your porch enjoying the evening and it got the smell, uh, trash all evening, and I don't think that's fair to you as a homeowner. Um, and so, uh, and then the fence itself, is it at the right height that it needs to be for you to be satisfied?
Yes, sir, they passed it for it to be eight feet.
Eight feet, okay, okay, all right, so you, you, you good with that?
I'm good with that, and I won't have to look at nothing that's going on over there, the, the dumpster, um, the trash that falls on the ground when the dumpster gets filled up, and I, I really wish they would consider dumping that dumpster twice a week, because they got a daycare now, and you know what comes in a daycare? And that's what the smell is.
Okay, well, yeah, I, I think that's fair. I really do, you know, I, because this is your home, and last I checked, the homes over there are not, uh, inexpensive, they're very expensive.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and so nobody should have to endure that, uh, in their, um, you know, lifelong investment, so I think the church gonna have to make some adjustments, um, with respect to that, I think they need to move it, in my opinion, they need to move the dumpster back to a hundred feet back and, um, and to have it, um, dumped more frequently than the once a, a week, cause that's not, that's not helping you.
No, sir.
Because the, the wind drift carries the odor, uh, since they're not spraying it. You know, it'd be, it'd be a different thing if they were spraying it because they have the ability to retard their smell. Uh, and I'm not sure if I buy the fact, and you shouldn't have to talk to the folks that they're paying to pick up their trash uh, on a weekly basis, you should have even had to have that conversation, you should have had a conversation with the church folk, and the church folk should have had that conversation with the folks they paying to come and pick up their trash. And that's, you know, but I think, you, you know, we have to coexist, but, uh, I don't think that your quarter of life need to be impeded upon.
Thank you, Council Hoyt. Oh, we, we're gonna let Counselor Abbott ask her a question, and then, um, we're gonna move on to the next person. Counselor Abbott.
Thank you, um, I, I guess my question is really for the staff, because I was here for the last time the church made some changes and we approved it, and my recollection is that the fence was part of the agreement. So, does the city not ensure that the agreement is actually followed through? Because I would think that this would be on the city of Birmingham if it was part of the agreement to make sure that the requestor did what he committed to do.
Roger Low, Planner, City of Birmingham, um, the fence was a part of the conditions placed on the case by the subdivision committee. If the plat or case hasn't been recorded with the judge of probate within a year of approval, it has to go back through the complete process, and that's why we're here today.
Okay, so they just had never gotten around to doing what they committed to do?
Today, they do have a fence permit in hand, ready to install the fence.
Okay, okay, and then the other thing with the dumpster, it's not legal for people to pick up and, and take out dumpsters before seven AM according to the noise ordinance, but getting the noise ordinance enforced is always a challenge. But those dumpster companies know they're not supposed to come before seven AM, they just do it if they can get away with it. So that should be dealt with. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Ford. Uh, who's next? Uh, Pastor, would you like to speak?
Hi, I'm Renee Elliott, I'm at eighteen twenty-four Martin Luther King Junior.
Can you bring the mic closer to you?
A little better?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Renee Elliott, eighteen twenty-four Martin Luther King Junior Drive, Birmingham, Alabama, three five two one one. And I'm just here because the alley, I go in and out of my backyard through that alley, and we had talked about having a ingress, egress easement, and I just wanted to make sure it was still there, because all this other stuff going on.
Can someone from the city answer a question? Not, not you, can someone from the city answer a question?
That easement does exist.
Okay, thank you. Next person?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, I'm Keith Williams, um, I'm, live at four fifty-six Capa Avenue South in North Tidusville. Um, while I don't live in the Woodland Park neighborhood, um, I am concerned about what's going on over there, because back in July, um, I actually done a tour of Woodland Park back in July, and I did run across, you know, some of the problems that, uh, the gentleman had mentioned, the first speaker, you know, have mentioned, uh, and these things was brought up in previous, uh, city council meetings in the past that has not been, uh, addressed since those, uh, since the council had, uh, approved the last, uh, initiative that the, you know, church was trying to do, particularly the fence and the moving of the trash cans. Uh, it's too close to, uh, to the residential sections, you know, of that area, and, uh, if this problem is not fixed, it's going to cause some kind of nuisance, you know, you know, in that community. Now, what kind of nuisance, you know, I don't know, particularly, uh, you know, the trash cans being, uh, just smelling the way they are, it's definitely gonna cause a nuisance. And, you know, also, you may run into some, uh, traffic, you know, problems. Um, so in conclusion, um, the main thing is transparency. If they say that they're going to do something, and it's not being done, that's a problem. How can a Biden reward someone, you know, with a vacated property if they have not done what they previously supposed to do? So that's something that needs to be considered, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Is there anyone else?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Ralph Mays, and I'm here on behalf of Woodland Park Church. Uh, just wanted to, uh, ensure the council that the church is under contract with a fence company to erect the eight-foot fence, the material had to be ordered, and because of the height of the material, it's not just standard, uh, stock, so it'll take several weeks for the material to come. And when the material arrives, it will be erected, and, uh, the conditions will be met.
Uh, how long will it take for that fence to be done? I know it takes several weeks to be shipped, but usually sometimes they give you an updated date for shipment, when will that be?
Well, the, the, the material was ordered, uh, August eighth, and, and, uh, the fence company told me it would be eight to nine weeks before the material was shipped. Okay, now, how long it would take them to erect it? I don't imagine it would take very long, but I, I can't speak to that, but I can certainly update the council as I get that information.
Um, because Mr. Ford has been having these issues, and he and I have spoken several times about this, um, have you spoken to Mr. Ford about his issue lately?
Yes.
What was that conversation like?
It was cordial, it was cordial, uh, I was under the impression that we had met all of the conditions and his needs, and I updated him on the status of the fence, and as far as I was concerned, uh, everything was, was fine. As recently as yesterday.
Okay, thank you, um, Counsel O'Quinn.
Yes, um, so like Counselor Hoyt, I, I actually remember, um, this case, you know, coming, uh, before the council previously, and to my recollection, you know, we, we discussed the same issues, um, and that has, I think, pretty easily been, you know, over a year ago.
Well.
And, and so or I, I, it, I'm, it concerns me that, you know, this has been discussed previously, it's come before the council previously, and still, you know, there hasn't been progress, and we're not talking, you know, coming before the coun, council just recently, but, you know, many months ago, and in that intervening time, there hasn't been progress, and the homeowner is still, you know, trying to get the church to honor their commitments. So, um,
Well, with, with all due respect, it, it's, it's a little bit different than that, this, this, this really has evolved, okay? Uh, when we were before the council before, the conditions from the subcommittee meeting was to place an eight-foot masonry wall between the church and the homes, and, uh, the church at that time said that we could not afford that. So over the time that's elapsed, we have tried to, you know, negotiate with the neighbors and tried to work out something different, and this is the result of that, we, we couldn't afford to build a masonry wall for that length that we could afford to build this vinyl fence. And so the time passed that we had to come back through the process because we didn't do anything with changing the plat and so forth. So what we've done is we've come back through the process, we've talked to the neighbors, we've talked to the subcommittee, and they agreed that we could place the vinyl fence in lieu of the masonry wall, it was just cost prohibitive, we couldn't do that. So, given that they have agreed that we could do that, we have set out to meet those conditions, and that's why we're here back today.
Thank you for that explanation.
Okay, Counsel Woods.
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, could you explain, I guess, what is, what is your intended use for this vacated road?
Excuse me?
What's the intended use for the vacated road?
Well, on Mason Avenue, there were six abandoned homes, and the church purchased that property. And between Mason Avenue and the existing church property, there was an alleyway served in the back of those homes.
Right.
The church has razed all of those homes, cleared those lots in anticipation of making that additional parking for the church.
Right.
The, uh, planning and engineering department guided us in terms of how to, uh, get those lots zoned to a point where we could make a, uh, parking facility out of it. And the result of that was to abandon the alleyway and fold the, the residential lots into the existing church qualified lot, and make it all one, one big lot.
Right.
So, so thi- this construction is, 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 is away from what we are currently talking about here today. But there was some issues that had, uh, been present for a while that had to be resolved, and the subcommittee saw fit to pull the two things together and resolve everything at one time, and that's what we are tempted to do. So, we will abandon the alleyway, take all of the lots that are currently residential lots, and get them replanted into the church's existing lot and make it all one big lot for the church and the church's parking if we're able to construct that.
Okay, so will the alley still have access to Mason Avenue?
Well, the, the alley is, 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 is not open, okay? But there's a lot off, I mean, there's an alleyway off of Mason Avenue coming perpendicular into the point where we're trying to vacate, and that, that serves the house for Martin Luther King.
Right.
And we've already signed, uh, uh, easement, uh, deed, uh, to, to the homeowner, so that they will continue to have egress.
But that, like I said, that egress will remain on Mason Avenue?
Yes, it will be recorded on the plat, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Abbott.
I'm, I'm good.
You're good, everybody's good?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak on this item?
Okay, thank you, um, I'm gonna move, uh, to the latest item for two weeks until we deal with the situation between the church and the residents right now, so I move for a two-week delay.
Second.
All right, we're, uh, we're gonna delay it for two weeks, one second. Counsel Protem Alexander. Out. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, aye.
Counsel member Hillier.
Aye.
Counsel member Hoyt.
Yes.
Counsel member O'Quinn.
Aye.
One, one second, counsel. He needs to, the mic. There's an issue, Counsel Smith.
Okay.
We would have to re-advertise this for, for weeks again.
That's fine.
Well, you gotta change it, yeah.
Amend the motion to a four-week delay.
It'll actually have to be five, I'm sorry.
Gotta be five.
Counsel O'Quinn, so it hits the paper, it'll actually have to be more than four, to come back before the council, so.
So the, so the substitute motion is for five weeks?
Five weeks.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
I have a question. Is there any kind of action we can take aside from approving this that will prevent having to publish it all over again? Mr. Clark?
Uh, that'd have to be a zoning, I mean, a, a P P question, or legal, one of the two, yeah.
We can just delay it.
If we send it back to committee, I mean, does it, I, I'm just trying to avoid the expense of republishing. Um, is there a way to do that? Any kind of action we can take today that would avoid the publication cost? No?
The issue, the issue is that there's still being problems with the residents, especially Mr. Ford right now, and I'm, I'm not for approving something if he's still having issues with basically a nuisance that's going on. Yeah, I know Mr. Ford asked us to the latest item until those issues were resolved, because Mr. Ford has been having these issues for a long time.
Madam Chairman, since, since Mr. Ford asked simply that the fence be constructed before any other work can be done, we could make that a requirement of the council, that the fence be constructed before any other work's done, and the dumpster be relocated before any other work is done, and then we could approve it today with those qualifications. And that was what Mr. Ford asked for.
Mr. Ford, are you, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, come to the microphone.
What we had agreed on, well, what they told me, that they were gonna look into removing the dumpster somewhere else, the last time that we were down here, and it was someone from another department said that the dumpster had to sit where, where it was. So, what we have agreed on now is, uh, the three things in the house that they, that, that, that three houses that they had to do, I think they have done, I know that they have done mine's. And now, uh, we, they supposed to be just waiting on the fence to get it put up, but the thing about that is if you give them the permission to go ahead and do their parking lot, I'm afraid the fence is never gonna get up. Because they are not truthful-telling people, not this man here.
Well, we're not gonna accuse somebody's character now, but I understand that's something that did happen.
Okay, so here, here, here's the thing, Council Smithman, let's move to table this.
Okay.
Let's move to table this item, and before the end of the council meeting, we'll figure out, I'll give you all an opportunity, everybody kinda take a deep breath for a second.
Hmm.
All right, and then we'll come back.
So, Mr. President, can I ask Mr. Ford a question? Well, Mr. Ford, I just want to know if the fence had to be constructed before they could build the parking lot, would that satisfy you?
Yes, ma'am, that's what we agreed on.
Okay, well, I, I just wanted to make sure I understood what you want in order for this to go, so thank you.
Yeah, I think if by tabling it, everyone can catch their breath, and then before the council meeting is over with, uh, give everybody a few minutes to, to chat outside and get on the same page, if, if it's possible. And if not, then we will take it back up and see what we do with it, but.
Why don't you all move outside and talk, and I'll come out after the next item?
Okay, so we're gonna move just to table this item?
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
All in polls.
Okay, thank you. All right, next item.
Should be item eight. A resolution extending to the vacation of one thousand thirty-eight square feet of subsurface rights and one thousand and thirty-eight square feet of airspace along Eighteenth Street South, along Third Avenue South, and the block one fifty alley between Third Avenue South and Fourth Avenue South on behalf of three hundred Eighteenth Street LLC, Apple Ten Hospitality Ownership Incorporated T five LLC, and Wells Fargo Bank, N A, owners, so that the developer can construct balconies on the proposed apartment building in the hearing of all parties, and this is second reading, motion please.
Second.
Second.
All right, the item is before you.
Okay.
Calvin Abrams, uh, zoning administrator, City of Birmingham. Uh, this is subdivision case twenty twenty, number twenty. Um, what's brought before us was already read out, so I'll just move forward to the one-third right-of-way vacation fee has been set at twenty-four thousand six hundred twenty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents. On June tenth, twenty twenty, the subdivision committee of the Birmingham Planning Commission recommended the approval of this vacation to the full council. On July seventh, twenty twenty, the Public Improvements and Beautification Committee recommended this vacation to the full council. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, is there anyone here for or against this item? Please state your name, your address.
My name is Mike Gibson, fourteen zero three Sutherland Place, home in Alabama, three five two zero nine. Here to speak for, uh, representing the developer. Uh, the vacation is accurate as read, I'm, I'm here to answer questions if there are any.
Council Abbott?
Yes, I just wanted to ask, since this vacation is being done to provide balconies, why are the subsurface rights being given up by the city?
Uh, those are for, uh, foundations that are three feet below the ground. It's a footing.
Oh, okay, well, it, it just didn't say that, it just said balcony, so I thought, why do you need subsurface rights for balconies? Last I checked, balconies were up in the air, so thank you for that information.
Yes, ma'am.
Council Woods?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, what, what's gonna be the impact to, I guess, sidewalk and any impact to parking associated with, with these changes?
Impact to the sidewalk, the sidewalk will be rebuilt, uh, according to the parkside, uh, standards, so it will be improved. And there is, uh, minimal parking on-site.
But you, you're, you're not removing any sidewalks, and you're not removing any parking that, that exist?
We, the, the project will remove, the, 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 uh, lot right now is the, uh, old Wells Fargo drive-through, um, so there'll be a building built in its place.
I guess my question more so is, will you still be able to walk down Third Avenue South and Eighteenth Street South?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, anyone else? President Parker?
Okay, thanks. All right, uh, Mr. Clark, we're ready for vote on this item, please.
Okay. Council Pro Tem Alexander?
Aye.
Councilmember Hillier?
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn?
Yes.
Councilmember Smithman?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Aye.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
President Parker?
Aye, okay, that item passes.
Thank you.
Next item.
All right, the vote is withdrawn, and we go to eighteen, it looks like. A resolution confirming the appointment by the mayor of Director Five to Birmingham Land Bank Authority of the City of Birmingham to fill the unexpired term. Jason Eppinger resigned, said term expired October the second, two thousand and twenty-one. Thank you, have Mr. Hillier, you have the name, Mr.?
Yes. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, everyone, um, it is, the name is, replacement is Lonnie Hannan the third, Ph D. In your package, you have the resignation letter from Jason Eppinger, and you have the resume of Lonnie Hannan the third. And this is for district, this is for the Commissioner Five position with the expiration October second, two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay, all right, uh, this motion to close nominations.
Second.
All right, Mr. Clark, we're ready to vote.
All right.
I have a question before we vote.
Yes, ma'am.
Does this now fill all of the director positions for the land bank?
It does not, next week we have one more.
Okay, 'cause I knew we had one that was, um.
Yeah, this one just happened to, to come a week before because we had a resignation.
Thank you, thank you.
Council Pro Tem Alexander?
Aye.
Councilmember Hillier?
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn?
Yes.
Councilmember Smithman? She's out. Councilmember Wo- Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
President Parker?
Yes, aye, real question, I mean, I'm gonna declare the vote, question is there, so there's another one coming next week. Have their terms already expired, or you just?
The term's already expired, it's tomorrow.
Okay, all right, okay, all right, uh, we made that appointment, okay. Mr. Clark?
All right, uh, forty-eight. Item forty-eight on page thirty-four, a resolution, a resolution, I'm sorry, accepting a lump sum bid of Sims Contractors Incorporated P O Box one twenty-one oh four Birmingham, in the amount of forty-nine thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars for the Woodward Park dugouts installation project, this being the lowest and best bid submitted, and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Sims Contract, Contractors Incorporated, and substituting the form contained within the proposal documents, and according to said proposal, providing that the total compensation payable under the contract not exceed the appropriation, motion please.
Move the item. Second. This is item forty-eight? This is item forty-eight, okay. Um, I just wanted to take this off because this was a, a project that when I first got in office, I met with Weston Arlington Neighborhood with this, they had a bit concerned about what the park was looking like. If you had driven by this park, you see that the dugouts, they don't exist. Um, the playground needs to be improved, so this is phase one of this project for Woodward Park. Um, I wanna thank publicly Commissioner Tyson, my father, Senator Roger Smithman, all three of us along with the neighborhood are working on making sure this park is up to code and that it is a, um, that is a beautification aspect of the neighborhood and not eyesore anymore. Thank you, President Parker.
Yes, ma'am, all right, uh, we're ready for a vote for item forty-eight.
Council Pro Tem Alexander?
Aye.
Councilmember Hillier?
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn?
Aye.
Councilmember Smithman?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods? Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
President Parker?
Aye, okay, that item passes. Next item, Mr. Clark.
Should be item fifty-six on page twenty, thirty-six. Item fifty-six, a resolution setting a public hearing September the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, to consider the adoption of an ordinance to amend the zoning district map of the City of Birmingham. Case number ZAC two thousand nineteen dash thirteen, to change zone district boundaries from R three, single-family, uh, residential district to C two, general commercial district filed by Avorni Barker, representing the owner, Birmingham City Schools. Her property is located at thirteen oh one Fifteenth Streets and fourteen hundred Avenue M and situated in the southeast quarter of section thirty-one, township seventeen, South Range Three West Birmingham, and recommended by, submitted by Councilor Parker instead of Hoyt on this item. Motion please.
A little approval?
Second.
All right, item is before you.
This is set in a public hearing, yeah, we're ready to vote.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right, Council Pro Tem Alexander?
Aye.
Councilmember Hillier?
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn?
Yes.
Councilmember Smithman? Councilmember Williams? Councilmember Woods? Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
President Parker?
Aye, okay, that item passes, next item.
Should be item fifty-seven, same page, a resolution setting a public hearing September the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, twenty, to consider the adoption of an ordinance to amend the zoning district map of the City of Birmingham. Case number ZAC two thousand twenty dash four, to change zone district boundaries from D one, single-family district in I one, light manufacturing district to I two, heavy industrial district, to allow a corporate facility filed by Kent Haney, representing the owner, G K H LLC, for property located at fifty-seven, Fifty Highway Seventy-eight East, situated in the southeast quarter of section fifteen, township seventeen, South Range One West Birmingham. Motion please, and Parker again on the submittal.
Sorry.
Second.
All right, and should be ready for the vote.
Yeah, we're ready.
Council Pro Tem Alexander?
Aye.
Councilmember Hillier?
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn?
Yes.
Councilmember Smithman? Councilmember Williams? Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
President Parker?
Aye, okay, that, uh, item passes. Uh, seven, should be, uh, sevens, you're not. He put them in his nose.
Oh, I should've had it, I'm sorry, my apologies, yeah, we wanna correct that.
Just seven, zero, it'll be seven, zero?
Yeah, my bad.
Okay, seven, zero, okay, all right, that motion.
Thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
Um, should be on item fifty-eight. A resolution setting a public hearing September the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, to consider the adoption of an ordinance to amend the zoning district map of the City of Birmingham. Case number ZAC two thousand twenty dash five, to change zone district boundaries from I three, plan and manufacturing district to C two, general commercial district, to allow a wedding event center filed by Frederick Chapman, representing the owner, Kiffy Berryhill, for property located at seventeen eighty John Rogers Drive and situated in northeast quarter of section seventeen, township seventeen, South Range One West Birmingham. And again, President Parker is the submittal.
Second.
All right.
Quinn. Okay, voting should be open now. Council Pro Tem Alexander?
Aye.
Councilmember Hillier?
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn?
Yes.
Councilmember Smithman?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams is absent, Councilmember Woods? Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
President Parker?
Aye, okay, that, uh, item passes. Um, real quick, before we go, Council Smithman, are we, um, coming on the other item, we're good now, or?
Yeah, we're good, can you come?
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to give the council some updates.
Okay, we need to get the item back and forward.
Yes, uh, well, number is, yeah, number seven, uh, back up.
Need to make a motion.
Second.
Move the item from the table.
Second. Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
All in polls, all right, back and forth.
Yes, we, um, with, after discussion with Mr. Ford, he was informed that with the fence being conditioned by the subdivision committee, the plat, the final plaque cannot be recorded until all of the conditions are satisfied. No permits can be issued until the plaque has been recorded, so basically, the fence has to be installed prior to me going over there to record it. No permits can be issued until after I have recorded that plaque, so his issue, he doesn't have any issues with that, he wants to move forward.
Mr. Ford?
He doesn't have a problem with moving forward.
Yeah.
Okay, everybody good?
Yeah, mhm.
Chair, like you, you're good?
I'm good, yes.
Okay, all right, then, well, I guess we're ready for number seven.
Okay, we, since, we, since we tabled it and all the motions went to the table, we need to withdraw the five-week.
Um.
Yes.
He, okay, that was Dr. Quinn who had the five-week delay.
Withdraw the motion.
Second.
All right, all in favor, let it be, we don't need it, my motion, we fine, uh, so we're ready to vote on our item, okay?
Move, move the item.
Second.
All right.
Is this for the delay?
No, this is for, yeah.
This is to.
Voting should be open about now. Council Pro Tem Alexander?
Aye.
Councilmember Hillier?
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn?
Yes.
Councilmember Smithman?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams? Absent, Councilmember Woods? Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
President Parker?
Aye, okay, that item passes.
All right.
Okay, let's, uh, go through the denums and we got a couple of more matters we need to work on, we'll, we'll.
Item sixty?
We need to deal with Mr. Coleman's matter first.
You want?
That's number sixty, isn't it?
Yeah, number six, I said, uh.
Sixty, next?
Yes, sir.
Okay, item sixty, a resolution supporting the recommendation of the Citizens Advisory Board to delay the twenty twenty elections due to the financial and logistical hardship presented by the effects of the coronavirus. Motion please.
A little approval?
Second.
Good morning, sir. How are you, Mr. Mayor?
Been a long time.
North Birmingham.
Long time since I've been to city council meetings. Miss Abbott, how you doing? We still doing the roofs, I need you on top of the roof. My name is Jimmy Coleman, I live at two thousand eight Thirty-Fifth Avenue North, and, uh, O'Quinn put me in this position, president of the C A B. And I told him that, but anyway, we're here today, try to, uh, try to take the, we're supposed to have an election in October, we just like to have it in January, so we can practice a little bit more safely for our people. We got a lot of older people in the community. Last night, my secretary, secretary, kind of give some numbers on what happened last night, you know, man?
Good morning, how you doing?
Good morning, I'm Milton Spencer, I'm the vice president. And last night, we did have a meeting, and in that meeting, we had, uh, twenty-two people out of the twenty-three that are a part of the C A B, and seventeen voted for it, fourteen and one voted no, to postpone it until January.
All right, um. I want to know one, one question, too, this might be for the administration, but what, how much lead time do we need on, you know, before, I guess, right now, the election is just sometime, I don't know if it's the second or third week in October, but how much lead time will we need? Like, what's the drop dead date if we, if we need to change this or whatnot? Because it seems quick, now, I didn't know that there was a vote on this yesterday, I haven't had time to talk to my community, uh, presidents, so I don't, I'm not sure where they fall when it comes to this, but is there a reason why this needs to be voted on today?
Um, Council Hillier, want, so you wanna, I can come back to you, you wanna?
Sure.
That's his question?
Okay, that's the question, so is there a response from the administration? If not, I, we can ask and come back to you, Council.
Okay.
Woods, okay, Council Hillier? Woods, okay, Council Hilly.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, you know, it's, it's often good when you see both your neighborhood leaders in the house. And you know, there's been great discussion on this, we've talked about it, uh, quite a few times. And, uh, I'm in one hundred percent support of it, and I support my, uh, neighborhood and my community leaders, that they are. Really thought this through and made some wise decisions, so, Mr. President, I want to just, uh, just say that. We're supportive, and we look forward to hopefully, the rest of my colleagues will be too, thank you.
Okay, Dr. Quinn, we're going on.
Yeah, uh, so my question to the mayor's office, maybe, uh, city attorney's office is. Traditionally, the installation of new neighborhood officers occurs in February. The neighborhoods typically do not meet in January, um, due to the Martin Luther King holiday. And so, uh, if we did delay the elections to January of twenty twenty-one. Uh, would there be time to certify the results and get the neighborhood officers installed? By February? I, I know that would be contingent upon, um. The outcomes, you know, potentially being challenged, um, but for, in those neighborhoods where there was no. Uh, challenge, you know, in certifying the results, could those officers? Go ahead and be installed in February if the election was held in January?
Okay, um, guess that's question number two. Okay, Attorney King, did you hear all that, or you need a moment to come back to that?
I'm gonna research that.
Okay, all right.
I got a question.
Okay, hold on. Dr. Quinn, are you finished with your piece, I just want to make sure, cause I know Council Woods had one, Dr. Quinn had one, so. Can I go to Council Smithman, then I'll come to you.
Council, you can go first.
No, ladies first, no.
Ladies.
No, go ahead.
No, I, I just have a question, because we don't really know. When this pandemic will end, or if we'll be able to control it, really as a world, what's the? Do y'all have a plan of action if in January, we're still dealing with the same situation?
Well, what we're planning, this came up on us so fast about what we need to do right away in October. I know we're gonna have a general election in November. But what we're planning to do if, with the, with the, uh, community development department. If we can come together and works on plan out how we can let them do all absentee's, or provision ballots. Or, we can have one specific place that they can have a drop-off. But, we're looking for the safety of my people. I, I mean, I'm volunteer, and I'm, I'm, this is the first time I've been to City Hall since March the sixth. And I was with the mayor's office then, but what's happened, we having people making decisions. That we didn't have any, 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 any knowledge about it. So what we're saying, if we can get the community de- development department, just to call the C A B members. All the offices of the C A B, and let us sit in on the, on the meeting, so we can come to some kind of consensus. But the way it's been going now, we don't have anything to say about it, although we're volunteers, nobody paid Jimmy Coleman anything. And I've been doing this for forty-three years.
Yes, Mr. Coleman.
And, and, and my thing is, to Council Wood, I'd just like to let him know that. We can do anything that you would like for us to do, safe, but we don't have a, a time on who gonna die tomorrow. We got a hundred and some dying every day almost, so my thing is, I like to be safe. Whatever you decide to do is all right with me.
No, no, I agree with you, I just know, because what you were saying, absentee ballot was that option. If that comes to that in January, that's why I was asking, I would never, uh-uh.
We can get with the community development department, work something out. But it's too close now to October to work anything now. We just gave a timeframe, because like Council O'Quinn said, we don't get installed anywhere until February. So we can have the first week in January, or the second week in January, and be ready to do whatever we need to do in February.
Okay, and thank you for your leadership off of you.
Okay, all right, um. I was just trying to see if there are any, let's go back to Council Woods, cause I did, what I, he had an initial.
Well, my questions are all just legal, like, I mean, uh.
Counselor, what, hold on, you know what, I'm sorry. Council Woods, I'm sorry, I know, I'm sorry, Council Hoy, I, I, I know, I'm sorry. Council Hoy, I had a difference, and I'll, I'll swing back around, okay, I'm sorry, please forgive me. Council Hoy, I did recognize after Council Smithman, Council Hoy, so please forgive me.
Well, my question, I don't know if it's been asked, because I've been, um, sidetracked a bit up here. Um, but my question would be, if you elected in January. They'll, uh, would it run? Because they, you know, so the office is for two years, so if you delay it, will we be electing again? In the next two years in January, I'm just, you know, I'm, I mean. That's a question that, you know, maybe the legal can ask, I don't know. No, so, eh, eh, anyway, you don't take seat anywhere until after the first of the year, if you were elected in, in October. It'll start back in October, again, we just trying to do something safe for this term, if it's any way possible. This is the only time that we ever had to do this, so. And, and, and Council, you know, you was on the C A B for a long time yourself, and you know, we out here volunteer. And I hate to come and look at my neighbor's face and they catch some COVID nineteen, or whatever. You know, because Jimmy Coleman, we want to vote for you. Okay. You know, my thing is, I just like to do whatever we're gonna do, we're gonna do it safe. And, and it's so important that a volunteer position, meaning that I can get my neighbors out here to go and vote, will y'all vote that way? I let them know that.
Okay, so, it was, let's go, Council Abbott, then Council Woods, I'll come back to you, yes, ma'am, we'll just go that way, Council Abbott.
Well, we were in the midst of having a, a District Three Neighborhood Officers Meeting when the C A B meeting started. And right before your meeting started, we were having a discussion of how petition voting would work in places, in neighborhoods where there was no contest. And how all of this voting was going to actually occur, and there was great confusion. You know, nobody knew anything, um, and, and so, and there was a discussion of the requirement that you attend four meetings. Before you run for au- an officership, and there haven't been any neighborhood meetings since March, except on Zoom or whatever. So. The council is the one that passed the rules for the citizen participation plan, so we're the only ones that can change them. And my question is, has anyone broached this change within the C A B? The possibility of a change in the number of meetings someone would have to attend. In order to run for office due to the coronavirus pandemic.
Well, uh, Council Abbott, we, uh, we talked about that, because we stopped meeting in March. And, uh, we had said, we'll, we'll try to get it to two meetings, instead of being four meetings in a twelve-month period. And some kind of way it got involved, I think you was involved with it when we talked about two meetings instead of four meetings. And, uh, we were just trying to get it, so, some people couldn't meet, did not meet from March until now. Could they have met for two meetings before that, where they qualify them to run as a candidate? And my group, and we spoke at the mayor's office, that that's what we really wanted to do, just let two meetings be. You know, you're qualified, so, that was kicked out, so now we went back to the four meetings, no, let's, let it stay at four meetings, so. I don't know.
Okay, cause, because, I, I, I'm just asking, because no one has approached the council about making a change to the citizen participation plan, and we didn't know. I didn't know whether y'all were in favor of doing that, or not in favor of doing it, or you didn't care, or, you know, just hadn't heard. So I figured, since you were standing here, I would ask.
If anyone is in part, I mean, if anyone wanted to run for office, and they think so much of their neighborhood. If they didn't have but two meetings, I think they should have been at those two meetings. Like I said, I've been doing this for forty-three years, I know when Miss Abbott was on the C A B with us. And, uh, you know, it's a shame that you'll come up next month, you want to run for our office, but you have not been to any neighborhood meetings. It's just not, not what we looking for. I'm looking for someone in my neighborhood that really is interested in that meeting, or in, in the neighborhood. Get out and work voluntarily now, nobody's paying us. And but, that, you know, that's all we, we done that, Miss Abbott, we tried to.
Okay, so just to confirm. The C A B is in favor of going to two meetings instead of four meetings as the requirement? Or you're?
She was, we was trying to redo the, uh, do the C P plan, and that's what we were trying to, committee was talking about it, so then we got turned around.
Well, in reference to the two meetings versus the four meetings, we, we presented it to the C A B. And once we presented it to the C A B discussions, and then they went back to the fourth. Their rationale is that you have from September of nineteen to September of twenty twenty. And if you were interested in your neighborhood, you've had plenty of time to attend four meetings. So, that's where, they, that's the reason they stuck with the four meetings.
Okay, well, you answered my question, thank you.
Okay, all right, I'm gonna go to Council Woods, cause I need to go to him, and then, uh, President Pro Tim, Alex Aaron, and Dr. Quinn, and we're gonna wrap it up, so that's. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President, um. Yeah, so that was my concern, basically, the, the C P plan requires that the vote be in October, and this resolution doesn't. Do anything to change it, so it had to be another, uh, item to change that, but. I think you got some other considerations and, and other questions, you know, meetings from. Now through December, does that add towards your four meetings to participate, to be qualified to run? Um, but I, I would like to delay this a week, to be able to talk to, to my community presidents, um. About this, I didn't, the last I had conversation, you know, we were talking about. How to safely vote, and so I didn't know there was a move to push the, uh, push them back, but. I'll, I would like to delay it for a week, have some conversation, get some more insight, and a, a more robust plan to answer all these questions. Um, as well as kind of making sure we're clear on the process of actually changing the C P plan. Yeah, we do that in a temporary, uh, fashion.
He, he, here's where I think we can, we can get to a good place. Um, one, as the item is being worked on with the community development. Neighborhood organizations, they can work out what that plan is. I, I think, having an election in October, I think we're not gonna get the participation, I don't think the word will be out. Cause there's not any neighborhood meetings, so, you know, I think that's where we are, we're still in a. You know, we haven't flattened that curve yet, so, what precautions are gonna be in place? Now, where are they gonna vote, how does the word be communicated, everybody doesn't go on social media, so. The thought is, let's delay it, and those are some of the items, or homework assignments, everybody will come back with a comprehensive plan. That could be delivered to everybody through, you know, over a period of time, so that, you know. We might be coming back in January where we're still in a, you know, posture where we are now, where. We hadn't flattened that curve yet, so things now are gonna be taken on a day-to-day, week-to-week kind of thing. Uh, so that's where I think that the, uh, the, the C A B's perspective was coming from. Uh, one is, let's try to retool it, and let's, let's work through what those concerns are, and have a strategic plan that everybody can. Can, can agree on, um, I think that's the notion of, 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 I think that's the posture, I think, that the, the C A B is at now. So, um, President Pro Tim Alexander, Dr. Quinn, and then we're gonna entertain, uh, some motions.
All right, thank you, Mr. President, I just wanted to reiterate, but I believe that, um, Mr. Coleman has already. You all stated, and Ms. Spencer stated, I wanted to be sure that everyone realized, they've met since September twenty nineteen. Up until February or March, were most neighborhoods of twenty twenty. So, there would be that time that would have been allowed to have someone who was really interested in their neighborhood, to have been able to even meet. Up to, uh, most of the standards that already exist, so I wanted to just clarify, when you said delay. We're still on the floor is the delay of the election, not the delay of this item.
Right, we're, well, the item speaks to delaying the election process to twenty, early twenty twenty-one. I think Council Woods indicated that he would like to delay the item, which delays the election, so, but at the proper time. We'll address all those, I just wanted to make sure that if we've all had an opportunity, ask questions, give comments, I think Dr. Quinn. Uh, you had some other thoughts right quick, and then we're gonna entertain some motions, and we're gonna move forward, we got a couple of more things we need to get to, so, Dr. Quinn.
I'm thinking, I, I, uh.
I know you had something earlier, I'm sorry, and I had to, yeah.
Yeah.
You wanna come back, or?
Yeah, come back to me, please.
All right, okay, here, here's where we are, if you can think of it in the next minute or so. Yes, sir.
Does a phone call meeting count?
I don't.
As I said, they've been taking.
They've taken the role.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the question is, not all neighborhoods have, you know.
Correct, but I have some that have been doing some things by phone call, some that have not, so I just wanted to know.
Yeah, this is all part of this new norm, we all have to adjust to, what, you know, what's gonna be the new norm as we move forward.
Council, yes, sir. Yes, phone calls matter, I mean, it counts, if you was on a phone call with your community, a neighborhood should count. But, I have six neighborhoods representing North Birmingham community. Those other five neighborhoods sent me to C A B. Just like residents of District Nine, District Four, District Three, District whomever. Sent you down here to represent those districts, your decision is what they sent you there for. That's what they sent me there, they sent us there to C A B, to represent those neighborhoods, those neighborhoods. And that's what we here for. I mean, if we're gonna delay this, and delay it, and delay it, I mean, we don't have time to plan for what we want to do in January. We need to start making plans as of now, but I mean, you know.
Okay, all right, so here's where we are, um, there's a motion to approve, Counselor Woods, you.
Second.
Uh, I mean, I think we need to delay at least a week, I literally just found out about it in the chambers this morning.
Okay, all right, so, here's where we are. There's a motion to approve, but Council Woods is going to make a substitute motion, is that correct?
I moved for a one-week delay.
All right, um, so now, uh, we've got the one-week delay. Uh, Mr. Clark on, on the table. So this is for a one-week delay. And then if this item doesn't pass, then we go back to the original motion, is that what it is, okay, all right.
Pro Tim Alexander.
No.
Councilmember Hilly.
No.
Councilmember Hoy.
Abstain.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Yes.
Councilmember Smitherman.
Abstain.
Councilmember Williams.
Abstain.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Council, President Parker.
Uh, no, okay, so that item does not motion, so now we're back to the original motion.
Councilmember Pro Tim Alexander.
Aye.
Councilmember Hilly.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoy.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Yes.
Councilmember Smitherman.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Abstain.
Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
President Parker.
Aye, okay, that item passes, um.
So when is the date gonna be set?
That is, I think it's early January, but I think, I, I think the. C A B is gonna be working hand-in-hand with community development.
Exactly.
And I would imagine you all would be having conversations, and then coming back to kind of brief everybody, I'm sure you all are gonna be. At you all's monthly meeting with community development, working on a plan.
Council, I want to thank you all again, appreciate you.
All right, thank you, all right. Yeah, what, what you about?
Thank you, Mr. President, just a quick comment, um, you know, this doesn't necessarily, like, all the things that we do is not. Set in stone, and.
Yeah, it's, it's a moving target, yeah, we can still be in, in where we are now as relates to, you know, not being able to, to flatten that curve, so.
Right.
Yeah, okay, all right, uh, next item. Okay.
A resolution appointing one member to the Birmingham Jefferson County Transit Authority to fill the unexpired term of Ruby Davis. Resigned, said term expiring August tenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Council Hoy.
Uh, yes, we are recommending, uh, Mr. Willie Davis the third. Um, you all have, uh, have his resume before you, uh, he has served the city in, in different capacities, certainly. Has done a yeoman's job with the library board, and, um, very professional, and so. Uh, we've recommended him for.
him for, um, the library board to serve the unexpired term of Ms. Ruby Davis.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion to, um, any conversation, any thoughts?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
So, is this gentleman still on the library board?
He is.
So we're gonna appoint him?
To the...
To the Transit Authority Board also?
We got several members that serve on two different boards. I mean, so it's, I mean, I can't manage this time.
No, I was just thinking that, you know, variety and having lots of different people on our boards instead of appointing the same ones over and over. But I agree with you, there have been people who've been on two boards. That was my only question. I thought maybe he had left.
Okay. Dr. O'Quinn?
Um, yes, President Parker. Um, so I actually interacted with Mr. Davis on a number of occasions, um, mainly considering the, uh, condition of the Phillips School, which is right next to the Danner Project. Um, so I'm familiar with him, and I don't object to, uh, his nomination. I, I would like to ask the committee chair, though, um, why we haven't discussed this in, in committee, and, um, prior to this issue being added as an addendum today. So that's my question.
Yeah. Well, Dr. O'Quinn, uh, I have seen many iterations of certain things done on this day. I mean, you stood, you stood a whole lot of things differently. But, um, this is to fill the unexpired term. Uh, he's already accountable, has gone through the training, um, that, um, the administration put in for, put in place. Uh, he understands, um, the tenants of what it means to serve on the board. And, uh, Counsel Alexander has served with him, and knows him to be a very professional person. And so I think, um, he was appropriate for, for this board. Yes.
And the fact that we recommend...
Okay. Uh, yes, yes, ma'am. President Pro Tim first, Mr. Hilliard.
Thank you. I just also wanted to reiterate, I have served with Mr. Davis on, uh, the library board, and I believe he serves currently in a leadership role there on the library board. So he has served very diligently on the terms that he has been. And I've also known him to be on, he's on various other boards that, um, worked within the community for nonprofit sector. And so I agree with Mr. Hoyt in that it's important that we have board members who can get, hit the ground running. They already know what it means to be an effective and appropriate board member when it comes to serving on our boards and agencies. And so in this case, the training and the service has already been there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I would like to say that I, I think this is an excellent choice. I've talked to Mr. Davis many times on other issues dealing, uh, with his current position at the Danner Project as well as the library. He's been very responsive. This was a great choice, and I, I look forward to supporting Mr. Davis. Thank you. Thank you for bringing this check in.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? Okay. I didn't, I'm sorry.
Wait, yeah, and I just wanted to ask, cause I couldn't remember that we had announced this vacancy twice.
We did. And Max put it on the, on the website as well.
Okay. Well, I just couldn't remember it. That doesn't mean it didn't happen. It just means I can't remember it.
Okay. All right. Um, we're ready now. Uh, is there a motion to close nominations?
Yes. Move to close nominations.
Second.
Ready to vote, Mr. President?
Okay. Who, who's second for the actual resolution appointment? I got Counselor Hoyt moving in.
Uh, I think President Pro Tim Alexander.
Okay. All right. Council, Pro Tim Alexander?
Aye.
Councilmember Hilliard?
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn?
Yes.
Councilmember Smithman?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
President Parker?
Yes, okay. Thank you on that. All right. We've got a couple of things we've gotta do. We've got one presentation. We've got a item from, um, the city attorney, uh, is bringing forth. Um, and we've got, uh, so I want, I want, Mr. Hilliard, you just, you wanna go ahead and do your quick presentation, and then we'll bring up the item from the city attorney's office?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. I, I'd like for everybody from the, uh, from the, uh, Wildlife Federation to come forward while we clear up the video to be, be shown by, uh, the announcement of our National Wildlife Federation, uh, video. So I want all of the, uh, the members of, of B and others to come up, uh, while we, uh, show this video. Come to the podium and be a chance to say a few minutes, say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you, Jerrel. Well, first of all, let me say congratulations. There is greatness in this room. Where are you? Who are you? There is greatness in this room. There's strength, power, intelligence, and brilliance in this room. With these hands, with those hands that you have, there is power and strength in what you can create. Let me see you hold your hands up. I want you to understand. Touch your hands. Feel your hands. There is strength and power. You are creators. You are builders. You can do anything, and these hands and the knowledge and your head can take you anywhere. If you can imagine it, if you can dream it, if you can believe it, you can do anything you want to do.
We worked with the National Wildlife Federation to cut grass. Yeah, I think this is a pretty good opportunity to help our, to help build our community and make it look better.
My name is Tori Washington. I'm with Build Up Enslie. And this summer, we're working with the National Wildlife Federation to work on lawns all around Enslie. And lately, we're not just doing it just because make the lawns look nice. We're doing it for the whole community, cause the nicer the lawns look, the better the community improves, better funding for schools, building the community up one step at a time.
Y'all know, um, I tend to wanna be behind the camera, taking pictures of you guys, cause y'all are the stars of this show. Y'all are the future of Enslie. Y'all are the future of Build Up. Um, we are developing talent, not just to impact this community and impact your own homes for generations, but we want you to be a part of this program, one way or another, reinvesting in the young people. That's what you heard over and over again. And y'all are at that age where you can lead already.
National Wildlife Federation, District Nine. Thank you. And I, I wanna say to the council, you know, this is, of course, a part of a fifty thousand dollar grant that came through, and these gentlemen has done an excellent job. I recognize the fact that they've outgrown, uh, the Enslie area, and now they are, they're part of all of Birmingham. But I'm glad that, uh, we've, you started in Enslie, now you're sharing with the rest of the council and the rest of the district, we want you to say a few words.
Good morning. I'm Jerrel Jones, uh, executive director of Numma Gallery. Um, this came to me as a result of, uh, um, Councilman Hilliard, as a recommendation, a partnership between Build Up Enslie, um, my organization, which is Numma Gallery, the National Wildlife Federation, and District Nine. We've been working hard over here in District Nine. And I really wanna, uh, you know, have these kids come up there and share a little bit about, you know, what they thought about the experience versus, you know, me jaw-jacking. So let me give you, Bria and Tori.
Morning.
Good morning. Council President, wait, Council President Parker, council members, Mayor Whitford, thank you for having us. This summer... Sorry. This summer, our mission was to help make Enslie a better-looking place and more livable for people around. But to do so, we had Build Up Enslie partner with the National Wildlife Federation. They had me, Bria, other coworkers, working all around Enslie, working to make the lawns look better. And like, over time, I learned a lot. Cause we're not just doing to make it look nice. We have to make it look nice, improve property value, better property value, with more buyers, more buyers, a better chance for more landowners in Enslie, and more landowners, more taxpayers, better funding for schools.
And this is important to our community, because there'll be so much more opportunities if we have the neighborhood looking how it was before. Building our community back up should be our number one goal. There have been families and businesses here for generations, but over the years, Enslie began to deteriorate. And one of the main causes is not keeping our neighborhood well-maintained. And it is important that we make an effort to keep it in good order.
Yes, it is very important. Cause over time, I learned a lot, especially over the summer, working in all different places around Enslie. Like, the main problem I noticed, like, every time we worked on lawns, it didn't take lawn to cut the grass. It took lawn to pick up all the trash out of land about. That's a problem I know that we have. We have to work for it to keep this neighborhood more better-looking and clean. Cause... Sorry. Sorry. Yes. Very good. And that's a problem. For now, Build Up Enslie?
It's hard to get up there.
We're working to build and fix up the community one step at a time, every day.
Wow, wow. We're so excited to have you come here, and you are the future of what all of Birmingham would look like. We're happy you started in Enslie, but now we know that you're in Councilman Smithman's area, and you're moving around, and I'm, I'm sure all the rest will, will eventually have you in their community. So thank you so much. This, of course, I wanna say this, I, I don't wanna take all the credit, you know, just having, uh, uh, my staff, uh, I took them to a convention, and I told them on the way there, we, we drove, I told them, I said, it's important, when you move around, you network and you build relationships. And of course, they met the people from the National Wildlife. So to Tevin, AJ, David, and all of the ones, and Caleb, who made this possible and used the council's office to help push forward. I wanna say thank you for, uh, for their hard work. And of course, to Dr. Mark Martin, who's, who's sitting in the back videotaping and letting his kids take front stand. I wanna thank you too for your organization. And Jerrel, all that you have done, you've been very positive. If you wanna wrap it up? That's it?
Yeah, I just wanted, I just wanted everybody, just wanted everybody to know that the, we, these kids were assigned, um, a hundred and fifty thousand square feet of area to clear in, uh, District Nine. And there were fifteen of them involved in the project. So we, you know, we brought these too. But we wanna know, this was a big project over three weeks. They got a, a lot done. And, uh, it was just awesome to see them, you know, get involved and invest, because this is a generation that will renovate, uh, our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all.
Yeah, well, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, um, Mr. Jerrel, uh, you know, he lives in my district, so I have to give him a shout-out, you know what I'm saying? And then his wife and I are good friends. But anyway, uh, but wanna say thank you, uh, for the work that you're doing. Uh, certainly, uh, this organization's making an impact, and that's what it means to take ownership, uh, to put neighbor, back in neighborhood. I think that's your, that's your mantra. And you, you know, he doesn't say it so much, we all got it now. But, uh, but this is really what it's all about, and certainly appreciate you all. And, uh, I wanna say to the young man, um, I, I don't know if I'd have had enough nerve to even come to the podium. Uh, and I know it's, you know, uh, it's, it's hard, it's intimidating and all, but you did a good job, sir. I just wanna just reinforce that, because it, I know what it is to, to get up and speak and what have you, and it's not easy. I don't care how often you do it, uh, it's not easy. So I just wanna encourage you, uh, so that this is the beginning, a minute that you're gonna have to give and listen. And each time, we get better and better and better. Aye? God bless.
Okay. All right. Thank you all. Thank you, uh, for your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you. All right. Mr. Clark, what's your other stuff?
Okay, we have the items recommended. Uh, we're gonna do UC on this one, the actual order. Uh, be it, you want me to read the whole thing, or what? Council President? Okay, that's fine. Be it ordained by the council of the city of Birmingham, that the Council President of the city of Birmingham is authorized to execute any and all documents required for the city to receive a donation from Mayor Whitford in the amount of ten percent of the mayor's salary each month through June thirty, two thousand and twenty-one, or until such time that is in discretion of the mayor. The donation is no longer needed, whichever is earlier. This donation will support the city of Birmingham and help offset budgetary shortfalls, and authorize the council president to take any and all actions and execute such documents as appropriate and necessary to accept and spend these funds on behalf of the city. Any motion, please?
Move for unanimous consent.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed on your motion?
Hey, hold on. You make sure that you note my abstention.
Well, if you, not on the UC, on the actual item.
Okay, well, hold on.
Yeah, well...
So we got, Councilor Smithman, you making a motion on the item? I mean, the UC, I'm sorry.
Yes.
And the second was by?
Uh, I think Counselor O'Quinn.
Okay.
Yeah, before you carry this.
So the item is before you for a motion? I need a motion on that.
Some of...
All right.
Yeah, well, you know, we, we've had to, um, process a lot today. And I understand the mayor making his offerings, um, and I think we all have to make some decisions. But, um, I think for the, uh, the process to be inclusive, I think we need to look at this budget holistically. I just believe that as a council. And, you know, um, we don't need to piecemeal it. We need to look at it and see, um, what significance, um, cuts that we need to make, if we need to make those cuts has been represented, I mean, been presented to us. And so I just really think you're putting a horse before the court. I just believe that, uh, we deal with this collectively, uh, because, um, is the council gonna make the same kinda, uh, proposal? You know, and so I think, you know, the irony is to work together. And so I would like to see this item taken up, uh, when we present the budget back to the mayor, and then begin that process. That's just me.
Madam Pro Tim, if I may respond to Counsel Hoyt?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
The mayor's budget is, is dictated by, um... It's, it's approved outside of the peripheral of the council and my, me being in the position. The only way to take the ten percent cut is to give the money back to the city, which requires your approval. In addition to that, my employees are gonna receive a reduction in salary. That will be before you all approve the budget as well. Their letters will be resubmitted to them today to reassign my staff. I ask that you not delay this, because as stated earlier, as leaders lead from the front, I'm not telling you all, please take your time with your budget, but, but separate us as far as letting the mayor, this, my team, take the lead on the tough decisions needed to be made, to the reality that's facing all, all of our employees. And whatever decision you all make with the budget, I'm commutative, open hand on that, not a clutch fish. I confirm that we will reach some compromise and agreement on those decisions. But related to, um, me taking a pay cut, legally, the only way to do it is for you all to receive, the city to receive the money back, because by statutory, I'm not allowed to cut it. So I ask that you please accept this today, Mr. Hoyt.
So, Mr. Hoyt, does that answer your question? The mayor responded to your question?
I understand what the mayor's doing. Uh, but I think, too, in all fairness, um, let the council look at the whole budget before we make those kinda decisions. I just, you know, I mean, it might be the fact that we could find some more, um, measures of cutting that may not impact people's salaries. So I'm just saying, we hadn't had that opportunity. And I think in all fairness, I think we need to have, um, that opportunity and then do the, the workshops that we generally do, uh, collectively, and, and come up with some, some resolve. Because, um, you know, and even if, you know, they decided that that's what they're gonna do, uh, we don't know. We could probably, um, you know, pool the cars, in terms of, you know, lend folks carpool. We could do a whole lot of things as a city to try to save monies and what have... to try to save monies and what have you. That's his iteration. But now we have a fiduciary responsibility to sit down and look at that budget and to see if in fact there are some changes or some additions that need to be considered. That's, that's, that's my point.
Thank you, Mr. Hoyt. Any other questions? I'm leaving, Mr. Hilliard. I'll get to you.
Thank you, Madam Pro Tem. You know, let me say this. Normally, Mayor, I would truly agree with you, but we just got it today. I just sat down, this was just delivered to me. I, I really wish, and I agree with Councilman Hoyt to this extent, that we haven't had a chance to absorb this and take it in. It was just put on in the front of me when I walked in the room. And, and I would tend to want us to really make sure when we do it that it's been some real thought from all of us collectively put involved in it. I would tend to agree with Councilman Hoyt.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hilliard, Ms. Smitherman, and then Mr. Williams.
I think Mayor Woodfin was about to say something.
I'm sorry. I apologize. I didn't know it was a question for the mayor. All right.
Oh, no. If I remember correctly, there's a gap, isn't there, between, that we have to go into our reserve fund for? Didn't you say that today? That we have like a 23 million gap? So, so I guess my question to you, Councilor Hoyt, is you're saying we can cut money somewhere else before he can cut his salary. But if we have this 23 million gap, wouldn't it be, I don't know the correct word for it. Wouldn't it be better if we cut his salary? And then we also need to look at cutting, well, I won't say what we need to do. But since we're the only department not getting cut.
In all fairness, in all fairness, he's given some thought to this. And we cannot give thought to something we just got. And to, to make those assumptions and, and, and understand that these are human numbers that we are dealing with, and we need to deal with the, with the budget in its totality. We still have a capital budget that we have to look at and, and all those things. And I'm saying, just let the process, you know, have its place and what have you. But I just, you know, I don't think it's necessary at this point, until we've had an opportunity. I mean, that's just the process.
Madam Pro Tem?
Thank you. And if I could just say, hold on a sec. Well, I was just going to say, Ms. Smitherman, some of your questions, I think, are relative. I would come more during our budget discussions. I do know, I want to go ahead and allow the mayor.
Well, I, I just asked that question. It's because Councilor Hoyt was saying that he did bring up a good point.
Right.
I was just looking at it from all perspectives.
And it's a good question, but it's one I'd like to see us go a little further. But I think there's a.
Madam Pro Tem, it's, look, let's not make this hard or political. The city council or me, I can't, you can't dictate whether my pay increases or decreases. I'm asking you all to, U.C.C., to accept the money back. That's all I'm asking you to do. But she can clarify that easier. It's, I mean, the decision's made.
All right, go ahead, Ms. Smiley.
Melissa Smiley, Office of the City Attorney. There is a co-provision that provides that during the term for which the mayor has been elected, the council cannot, his salary cannot be increased or diminished. So what he's doing, or what he's offering to do, is to receive his salary and take a percentage of that and donate it back to the city. So he's not asking you to take an action to reduce or increase his salary. He's asking you to accept his donation. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you for that clarification. Mr. Williams, Mr. Woods, I know you both got this.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Pro Tem. I don't know if I'm on a different planet right now or something, but it seems that the, you know, the mayor is in a leadership position. He is in charge of 3,500 to 4,200 employees, depending on where we are in terms of our employment level. And I think that he's realized that there are going to have to be some furloughs as well, as well as paid holidays that are now unpaid. And I think, I would like to commend you on, part of being a leader is doing, I think, what, what you're doing right now. And I think that we are just accepting a donation. If we don't want him to give it to the city of Birmingham, I know Ruffner Mountain would enjoy it. I don't even know how much he makes. You know, if it's, if it's based off what we make, probably not that much. But there's, there's, I mean, he's, he's donating his money, his personal money to whomever because it's back to the city. You know, we, we have to approve it, but if, if we want to prove it, I know Ruffner will. And so thank you for your leadership in donating 10% of your salary.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Williams. I'm going to go to Mr. Woods and I'll come back to you, Mr. Hilliard. Mr. Woods?
Uh, yeah, I think Attorney Smiley kind of hit what I was going to say basically. You know, it's, it's accepting a donation. And I imagine he's had to make some not-so-fun phone calls lately and being willing to do that. I just think it's, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't, but I just wanted to clarify that it wasn't reducing his salary. It was accepting a donation.
Thank you. Mrs. Abbott, did you have a question? I think you're the only one that hasn't asked.
I just had a comment. And that is that this, the mayor has given us his proposed budget. This budget, right now, is his responsibility. We're going to go through it and we're going to give our opinions and all that. But it's on his shoulders to cause a lot of pain to a lot of people. I admire the gesture. I understand it. And I think that you're making a donation of part of your salary back is a good thing to do. And I'm, I can't change anybody's vote on unanimous consent. You're either going to give it or you're not. But I'm certainly willing to approve accepting a donation. And yeah, I can think of a couple of places that could use it too, if the city doesn't need it. But we know how desperate we need money. And we know we're not going to find $23 million, much less anything else, to save people's jobs. And so I think that this is a, a nice gesture and I appreciate it myself.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott. Mr. Hilliard?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Pro Tem. Based on what she, what Attorney Smiley said, I have a better understanding. I wish we had talked earlier about it and then I really would have did it, understood it. But now that I do understand it, I will say that District Nine is definitely in need of that donation. I have several groups in the area that will gladly accept your gracious donation. And with that, Madam Chair, I, I, I'm with the program.
Thank you very much. I believe everyone's had an opportunity to speak to this item. So what is before us is, could you read again what we're voting on at this point? Again, I mean, this item, but we're not, the delay did not.
For the President of the Council to execute any necessary documents for the donation of 10% of the mayor's salary.
Okay.
Through the period outline.
Did we get a motion?
We did.
Okay, and we have a motion in the second?
Motion of the item. It's on the floor.
All right, thank you. So it's on the floor. So now we'll call for the vote.
Okay. Councilmember Hilliard?
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn?
Yes.
Councilmember Smitherman?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Aye.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
President Alexander?
Aye.
Thank you, Madam President. I mean, Madam Pro Tem, and thank you, Council.
Thank you very much. Next item, Mr. Clerk. Are we at the end of the agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Right, at this?
I have a resolution.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, Madam Pro Tem, I would like to offer a resolution of, of sympathy for Mr. Terrence Carson, T. Carson, a noted DJ in this city and a man who I think was just an humble person, very talented and gifted, as we all know him to be. And certainly want to offer our prayers to the V94.9 team. Because it's a great loss. And then also, you know, the gentleman, Curtis Bell, is in the hospital. And so we just want to pray for those persons as well. So, but I want to offer this resolution to T., Terrence Carson.
Thank you.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Now the item?
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. And Mr. Hoyt, did you have any comments? For now, we're doing it through Councilor comments.
Okay. Yes, the Five Points West Cleanup Day is going to be Saturday, August 22nd. I think that's this Saturday. And the signing in is at 7:45. And the day will be ending at 11:15, which include brief recognition program. From Mayor Woodfin is also invited to this, this occasion. And I just want to say that I'll be speaking to the Neighborhood Academy in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, on Thursday as a little pep talk for the teachers and the faculty returning to start the school year. So I'll be doing that via Zoom. And so I'm delighted that Micah Errett is one of my fraternity brothers, who is the counselor there at the school. And so he asked me if I would do it and I agreed to do it. So we'll be looking forward to, to that opportunity to speak to the young people. I mean, speak to the faculty and staff.
Thank you. We wish you much success in your presentation. I was just going to say, safe travels, but it sounds like you'll be Zooming it from your homes. Great. Thank you. Mrs. Abbott, do you have any comments for your council?
Yes, I just wanted to say that we had our first District Three Zoom meeting last night with all our officers who could participate. And it was really great to see everybody. And actually, I saw Dr. Lee for the first time in quite a while, and he's grown a beard. So, you know, I was like, who is that man? And then I realized it was him. So it just goes to show that we're all hunkered down so much that we don't even know what each other looks like anymore. But anyway, I did want to say that Budget and Finance is this coming Monday at 3:30. And the deadline is tomorrow at noon for people to get their requests in. And I realize since we don't have all that much money, we're not having as many requests, but we're still having some. And we do want them to be in on time. And then, and then the actual meeting will be on the 24th at 3:30.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Dr. O'Quinn?
Thank you, Madam Pro Tem. Central City Neighborhood Association will meet tonight at 6:00 P.M. via Zoom. Graymont Neighborhood Association will meet on Wednesday at 4:30 via teleconference call. And Druid Hills Neighborhood Association will meet next Monday, August 24th at 6:00 P.M. There, via teleconference. And if you need the information on how to join these meetings, you can go to my District Five webpage or my Facebook page and get the information on how to join those meetings. Also, want to let you know that a week from today, August 25th, from 10:00 A.M. to 4:00 P.M., the Red Cross will be having a blood drive at the Fountain Heights Rec Center. And to sign up, just dial 1-800-RED-CROSS or go to www redcrossblood.org and enter the sponsor code NAACP. Again, that's next Tuesday, 10 to 4, Blood Drive at the Fountain Heights Rec Center. And that concludes my announcements. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. O'Quinn. Ms. Smitherman?
Thank you, President Pro Tem. Alexandra, I just have one announcement. As the Chairperson of the Public Improvements Committee, I'm announcing a vacancy for the Land Bank Authority. All interested applicants should submit their resumes to Attention Liquida. That's capital L, A, capital Q, U-I-T-A Wilson, District Six Office, Birmingham City Council, 710 North Tulian Street, Birmingham, Alabama 35203, or via email at liquida.wilson@birminghamal.gov. All resumes should be received by 5:00 P.M. on September 4th, 2020. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smitherman. Just a few announcements from District Seven. We do have quite a few events. I do want to thank citizens. We've had a number of citizens that have gone out and done some community cleanup, litter pickup on their own. And so I want to thank them for doing that. We have two community district cleanups coming up. The Germania Park Neighborhood will sponsor one on this coming Saturday. And there will be also one in the Winona-Jones Valley area on the following Saturday. So that's August 22nd and August 29th. If you'll just look on my District Seven social media pages, you'll be able to see the opportunities where you can be a part of the solution. Just for other announcements, for District Seven Quarterly Chat and Chew and Coffee with the Clergy, those will be held virtually. And that information is available. Each of those groups, our neighborhood presidents, as well as our District Seven clergy, please look for your emails and it outlines when those events will be held. Chat and Chew will be on August 19th and Coffee with the Clergy is August 21st. We do have some COVID-19 testing sites that are coming up in District Seven. One is the Galilee Missionary Baptist Church. That will be on August 19th from 8:00 till 11:00. And that's at 3753 Carver Avenue. And there will also be one at the Greater Shiloh Missionary Baptist Church. And that will be held on Monday, August 24th from 8:00 to noon. And this is one of the first test sites that will be on a soft launch to increase the testing in the additional testing sites within the city of Birmingham. So thank you. That concludes my announcements. Can I have a motion for an adjournment?
Question to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Great job.
Thank you very much.